Okay, thank you. We'll bring the meeting to order here. It's Tuesday, April 17. Public Board, geez boy, this is gonna be a bad night. Planning Board. Our first matter is a public hearing, and this is for Chapua Crossing. This is the application for a site development plan retail amendment. This is the steep slope permit amendment, wetlands permit amendment, and stormwater pollution prevention plan approval for a pipe rerouting and extension at 480 Bedford Road.
Do you do motions to open public hearings?
We can. I usually do when Dick reminds me. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Actually, I think it's also a treat.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, your current.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Andrew Tong from Divni Tong Shualbi here on behalf of Chapua Crossing Retail. As the chairman noted, this is a proposed site plan amendment to relocate a pipe. In fact, a 36-inch drainage pipe that was to go along the west side of the existing building, that is, the former Reader's Digest building, in the area of the 300, 400, and 500 buildings, to connect the drainage from the stormwater basin that is now sitting where the 100 building used to be, at the south end of the existing office building. And to connect to the existing drainpipe that leads from the former Reader's Digest building westward across or under the entry road and to the western side of the property. Good evening. Up on the screen will show the two conditions. The one at the bottom is the approved plan, and the one at the top is the proposed relocation. The pipe was to discharge here, the dash line is the pipe, it was to discharge into a new linear basin, that was stormwater basin, that was to be at the, just at the west side of the 400 and 500 building, and then drop via manhole to connect to a pipe that is deep underground in that location. In further investigation during the construction work, it was determined that the survey was wrong in that area. It showed the building 12 to 15 feet short of where it actually was. So you can see that that is up there, and so there was no room to put that narrow level basin in which the pipe was discharging. So the alternate plan, which was developed in coordination with town staff who were there during construction, as well as DEP, was to make a diagonal connection across the slope here, so slightly more diagonal, and then cross the drive to a new catch basin on the far side of the drive, west side of the drive that is, that would drop down and meet that existing pipe. So basically, it's a relocation of the pipe from here to there. We were here last time. There were some comments by the environmental coordinator and by the town engineer. We believe in our recent submission, we've addressed those comments, but I'm prepared to answer any other questions you or staff may have.
Right. Steve's not here this evening, but from his memo, it seems that you took care of his concerns.
Yes.
So I think he was satisfied as far as that goes. Bob, will you want to comment?
Everything's been satisfactory completed.
Okay. Sabrina, any issues?
No, none.
Okay. All right. Any questions from board members on the application?
Nope.
Any comments from the public on this application? No?
I might need to call twin X.
We have a 36-inch pipe for that. Okay. Not seeing any? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second? All in favor? Aye. We have a neg deck that's prepared for us. Staff has put together. Andy, no problems with the, have you seen it?
I have not seen it, but I'd be happy to scan if that's, I take it.
Yes.
If it doesn't have any significant.
Right, exactly. That's the short form. That's a really short form.
Short form, shorter short form.
It's the bullet.
Actually, there's nothing to see on it. It's just a chance.
Any questions on it, comments? If not, is there a motion to adopt the neg deck? Motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And we have a resolution that was prepared by staff in connection with this matter. And have you seen that, Andy, the draft?
I have not.
It's very straightforward.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions on it, board members? I think we've seen some revisions that have come through that Lester's done, made, and Bob and Sabrina, but I think otherwise, I think we're set. Unless there are any issues or questions, is there a motion to move forward to adopt the resolution?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Tom and Greg. Tom and Greg.
Do I need to give it back? May I keep this? Okay. Very good.
We move now to an informal hearing for a pending application. This is also Chapua Crossing. This is the application for a site development plan approval for the East Village, 480 Bedford Road. So as I understand it, we'll have sort of a brief conversation about the corner and how that works, and some of the comments that we addressed to the applicant last time.
Yes.
And again, so everyone knows, and members of the public, et cetera, we have set up a, you know, into the future, we have a dedicated meeting on September 5. It sounds like a long way off, but September 5 will be Chapua Crossing. The reason for that is Les will be out in July, so we wanted to make sure that you guys weren't held up unduly, so we can meet in May, June, but also make sure, we weren't going to meet at all in September, but we've set up a date for you guys, September 5, the Wednesday after Labor Day. So that will be, we'll get caught up at that time.
Okay. Well, we'll see how far we go as we move forward. So, good evening again. Andrew Tong on behalf of SG Chapua B and its contract vendee for the East Village, Toll Brothers, Inc. Since we were last before you, we have been working diligently to address the various comments that the board offered to us, as well as those of staff. We've had the opportunity to meet with and speak with staff and your consultants several times, and the chance to meet with representatives from your board at one time. And we appreciate that extension of that possibility, because I think it was very helpful to sit down and go over things that we were looking at. What I'd like to do tonight, we also received recently, after this submission was made in March, memos dated April 2nd from your staff, that we are now working to address. The purpose of this meeting is not only to go give you an overview of the submission, but also hopefully to receive your comments, so that we may address those with staff in a coordinated response memo. So I'm just gonna, oops. Change script. So I'm just gonna go through the high points of the submission, and then look at some slides, and then open it up to questions from you, if that's okay. So the high points of the resubmission, one are the, at that corner that you were describing, that is, the corner of what I call the east entry drive and the loop road, the reorienting of the townhomes to face the loop road, and the dropping of the elevation of those townhomes through a combination of site grading and also creative drop slabs within the units, which I'll describe in a moment, to bring those units closer down to the street level, and actually improve on the condition that was in the approved plan development concept plan. Secondly, we've included a board showing a number of variations in the facade treatments, that is, between the brick, the stone, and the siding treatments of the different styles, to address a comment that there was a concern that there might be too much similarity in the facades. So within the vocabulary that we've established for the Georgian-style townhomes, we offer that type of variety. Thirdly, the East Village consists of 91 townhomes, as well as the former guest house, the building that was used as the guest house for Reader's Digest, to be converted into a resident amenity building. That building, upon further review, has problems both interior and exterior, and we'd like to present to you an alternative to that, also a description of what that report was of the investigation, of a new building designed specifically as a community building that would relate, we believe, better to both the Kupola Building and to the new buildings in the East Village. Fourthly, we've looked to integrate the landscape and the grading on the east side of the townhomes, that is, facing Calden Lane, more so with the mitigation planting and buffer planting that was done as part of the retail project, and are working on that most recently, as recently as last week, with Mr. Coleman, to better integrate the grading and the planting there. We've included a preliminary SWIP, which is the binder in your package, that addresses comments made both by the town engineer and by New York City DEP. We've had a number of discussions with DEP on the retail project. DEP sees this as the phase three SWIP, that is, the retail being phase two, the overall being phase one, so it's all part of the same site, and so we've had the benefit of their early comments as well. And we've also updated the documentation for the various permits that we are seeking for these villages, including tree removals, steep slope, and documentation of parking that's provided in compliance with the PDCP. With regard to the PDCP and the secret findings, we have begun a matrix that tracks all of those conditions and findings that relate to the East Village. I've submitted that for initial review. We've gotten a sense back from Sabrina that she'd like to see a little bit more, and we're working on that right now. So that, in a big nutshell, is the things that we've submitted to you in this latest package. So if we just step through a few drawings, they're all in the package that you have.
Yep.
Just for clarification.
Yes.
Microphone, please.
Just for clarification and timing, because we skipped a week.
Yes.
The comments from staff are in response to this package that we had for the last meeting, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, yes. So this is, in red, the approved PDCP plan for the East Village. 91 townhomes grouped in groups of two to four. The auditorium in the center of the site will be subdivided into a separate parcel and maintained. Access drive, it runs through the center of the East Village, from the east entry drive to the loop road. All townhomes either face a street or an open space, an interior open space, with access to the garages from alleys between the townhomes in the back. So all buildings front on the street and have direct pedestrian connections to the balance of the property.
Andy, a quick question for you. Up here, I think in the revised plans that we're looking at now, we have seen, it looked like you had some sort of detainage or retention area, or rain garden in that area?
That's correct.
So was that in the original plan, or is this now something new that we've put in here, because you've discovered that, you know, through your studies of the SWIP, that we needed here?
This is a further development of the, in response to a number of things, including the DEP's requirement that there be two means of treatment for every drop of stormwater. So for, you'll see in several locations, we've used rain gardens, landscaped rain gardens as one of those treatments. So the PDC plan would not have typically the level of detail on the stormwater management plan as a site plan would have.
Right.
So if you go to the next slide, Matt. So this is now the updated proposed plan. The road is in the same place, going through the center. We've not changed the roadway. We've not changed the overall arrangement of the townhomes. And in fact, the corner that we were looking at, we have reverted to the same layout as in the proposed plan, or the approved plan, rather than turning them. And the turning them, the initial proposal to turn them was because we thought that the grading worked better. But we've now looked hard at this, and as I'll describe, with the combination of interior and exterior grading, we believe that we've come to a solution that addresses the issue that was raised.
So these, along this line, will face onto the street?
Yes.
As we had seen in the original plan?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. This plan also shows, in the same location, down at the bottom left here, a replacement building, if you will, for the guest house, that would be the new resident amenity building. So if you go to the next slide, what we've done is to overlay the two plans. And the approved plan, the PDCP approved plan is in red, the new plan is in blue, and though it may shimmer a little bit in your vision, basically, the units sit nearly on top of one another as the floor plans for the townhomes have developed. They're slightly different in size, so that's why they don't match up completely. There are, and so along the entry drive, all those units face onto the entry drive. There are a couple of interior blocks, one here and one here, that turn 90 degrees, again for better grading as we've gone through the process. But in essence, the townhomes are in the same locations in the proposed plan and now proposed plan as they were in the approved plan. Next slide. So here is the cross-section, if you go back for a moment, go back two for a moment. So I'm gonna show you two cross-sections, one through townhome number one, which is the top of the A block here, and the next is townhome number 24, which is the top of the I block here. And the cross-section will be through the main entry drive, so the top one will show Lifetime Fitness on the left side, and the bottom one will show the parking on the left side. So at the top is the 2015 approved MFPD plan, so the street with planting on both sides, sidewalks on both sides. The sidewalk on the East Village side actually stepped up about four feet at that point in time, and then again up to the units here. What we've been able to do, after discussion with your board last time and a number of work sessions, is to bring those units down through a combination, as I mentioned, of site grading and unit grading, if you will, stepping up within the units, so that the sidewalk is now down at the level of the street. It slopes up gently to a few steps here, and then the porch, and then you're into the unit.
What do you mean by stepping up in the units? What is that?
I'll show you on the next slide.
Okay.
Before you go to the next slide.
Yes, yes.
Microphones, please.
Before you go to the next slide.
Yes.
Could you explain how come the building is moving seven feet closer to the street?
Again, that's a matter of providing room for grading and for other elements. So it is shifting slightly, if we go back to that red and blue diagram. You'll see that the, some of the buildings shift one way or the other. Again, it's the refinement of the architecture and also of the grading between units. We need to have the, some areas between units need to be level, other areas can step.
Was there an earlier approvals on minimum distance we were trying to maintain from the curb to the face of, or was?
No, I was, there was none set particularly.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other question about that, 'cause I noticed that the distance from the walkway to the home is a little bit smaller, and also when we get to the issue about the development coverage for the East Village overall, we're a little bit over from the finding statement. So are the homes bigger than you originally envisioned them being? Has the whole thing sort of been sized up a little bit?
I don't know that they have. We can address the coverage. The coverage issue is, we can get to that in a moment, but I don't think that's really because of the buildings that have gotten large. The site as it, there was more road in the site than we intended there to be, and we'll show you how that changes. The buildings, we could do a comparison of the building sizes, but it's really, part of that is Toll is now the developer, they're gonna build this. It's, this is where, that was approved in 2015, so probably approved in 2013, or submitted in 2013. We're five years later, and they know more specifically what their market is and what they've been successful in providing for that market, so. And James Fitzpatrick and Casey Devlin are here from Toll, and they can talk about their unit type. We can do that now, or as we get a little bit further?
Go through your presentation.
Yeah.
But another question, I know that I saw in some of the memos that whether the size is larger or not, it seems that the number of bedrooms has increased, and anywhere from seven to 11. I'm not quite sure what the number was.
It was nine.
Up to 20.
Yes.
It's 29.
It's 20.
29 degrees now.
It's 20, it's nine because of the grading, which I'll explain in a moment.
Right.
And 11 because we believe that inadvertently there were 11 more buildings, 11 more bedrooms built in the Kupola Building than were initially approved for them. The number of bedrooms in the East Village has never changed. It's always been up to this request for the nine additional. It's always been 23-bedroom townhomes and 71 two-bedroom townhomes.
And that number's still the same?
That number is the same, except for the nine additional bedrooms, which translates to nine more three-bedroom units that are a result of the grading step-up that we've had to provide.
So it's, okay. So it's nine more?
Nine more.
One 20 more than what's approved in the PDCP.
Because of the Kupola Building and this.
Correct. So how many are in the, how many bedrooms are in the Kupola Building now?
I...
103, I think. 103.
Have that increase.
When the town board and this board were discussing the Kupola Building, and we were talking about adding the workforce housing.
Right.
And the affordable housing, making the entire building apartments. If you recall, when the PDCP was developed, it was only two floors that were to be residential.
Right.
So we made that change, and we neglected to change the finding statement or address that bedroom count issue overall for the site. So the applicant is correct in that the error did occur at the time we were reviewing the Kupola Building.
Okay. We get sloppy when we move these things along so quickly.
Correct.
They missed that one. I think we should probably really just slow down.
That may be a factor of the fact, the planning board didn't approve the Kupola Building.
You guys just commented.
That wasn't our role.
Okay.
You commented on it.
Of course, if it had been our role, we would've.
We would've slowed it down. We would've got it right, maybe, maybe. He's not part of my presentation.
Nor ours.
Moving on.
Moving on. Next slide, Matt. So this is the beginning of the description of how we've stepped up within the building. There is typically a difference in grade between the garage floor and the first living floor for carbon monoxide purposes, that can be eight inches, a minimum of eight inches, I believe. That, we call that a drop slab, so the difference in the slab between the garage and the first living floor. Here, these units that are near that corner have been designed so that you pull into your garage, and I'm sorry, the slide projection kind of compresses this, so it's a little bit of a, a little bit of a flattened drawing. So these cars are actually normal size, they're not many cars.
Those could be VWs.
They could be VWs.
Oh, that's a Porsche.
Or Minis.
Yeah, it could be a Mini. So at the front of the garage, the front of the garage is pushed in a little bit, and there's a set of stairs. In this case, it's a three-foot drop slab. And with that three-foot drop slab from the garage level to the main living level, we're able to make up the grade, some of the grade, within the buildings, rather than, as well as some of the grade within the site. So that as you go from the front of the building to the back of the building, front of the building is where the front door is, back of the building was where you come in with the garage, there's a three-foot difference between the first floor and the garage level. It can be, it can be up or down. As a result, and Casey will, or James will explain this a little bit further, they've had to, Toll has had to revise the, both the design of those particular units, as well, to some degree, the target market of those units.
Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
This is James Fitzpatrick from Toll Brothers.
Andy, I don't know if you wanted to jump back to this exhibit with the cross-section. It seems like we're right on top. It was kind of the orientation of this building that kind of shifted us over.
Yeah. So what Casey's pointing out, the, well, where the section is taken, it shows that this to be, I think it is slightly closer.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So talk about the units.
Sure. So.
Aim?
Sorry, James Fitzpatrick, Toll Brothers. Pleasure to be here. So when we started looking at the units to see how we could, you know, meet the requests of the planning board to help, you know, turn things back to the way they were, and get us, get the front doors down to street level to get that more neighborhood feel driving down the main entrance to the drive, we looked at a couple of different scenarios, and what ultimately made the most sense was really holding the front door in the first floor elevations, and then adjusting our garages where we could. What that kind of led to was requiring us to utilize what were typically smaller footprints. So those were the footprints of the homes that had bedrooms on the second floor, 'cause the first floor master units typically were a little larger in their footprint size. You know, we needed to steal a couple of feet off of what would be the eight-foot driveway apron. So in order to maintain that eight feet, we kind of had to shrink our box. So we kind of resulted naturally to the second floor master bedroom units. The way that we frame our homes, where we have a three-foot drop slab, that actually translate to, it translates to five feet, right? That's actually five, a five-foot difference between the garage floor slab and the first floor.
'Cause the first floor's got, you got your beams underneath, right?
Correct. Yes, well, our floor joists will sit on top of that foundation wall. So it allows us to transition up to five feet. But in doing so, you're creating almost, you know, two-thirds of a floor, so you're creating 10 risers. So the result of that is really, again, you're now kind of driving towards a home that is more acceptable to someone who, you know, is accepting a stairs and obviously is looking for a second floor master bedroom. So that was the genesis of how we ended up to where we were, and why we're looking for a little bit of relief on the bedroom count, because we're now gonna be marketing homes that are really not acceptable for people who are looking for, you know, would be accepting of a two-bedroom home, which are typically those customers who are empty nesters, never nesters, retirees, who are looking for, you know, single level, predominantly single level living.
Are these also units that have basements?
These would have basements, yes.
What's the egress, or the access from the basement? Is it just a window?
Yeah, we'll use skateboard windows. Here, you know, depending on how, we're gonna work, we still have to work the details out. On the end units, that will most likely come from the side of the unit. We'll build a nice window well with, most likely, a larger casement window. On the interior units, we'll have to work out a detail that coming off of the rear slider. But yeah, and how we handle our basements is where we can. Like if you look at the unit on the far left-hand side, if somebody, our basements come unfinished as the standard basement. Houses, mechanical equipment, water heaters, that sort of provides for storage. If people, if a customer elects to purchase a finished lower-level option from us, what we'll like to do is, you know, really open the staircase up, so there, it's not like a door leading down a set of stairs. It's an open rail, and it just feels like an integration of the first floor.
And would the basement be under the primary house and not the garage?
Correct. Yeah.
And is the basement going to have a bathroom in it?
We'll have options for half baths. You know, some folks will look just to do some rough-in plumbing, so they can add a half bathroom down the line. We do offer full bathroom options, not as popular as the half bathroom. They're predominantly used for recreation spaces. I mean, that's how we market them. We'll put down some nice movie theaters, bars, you know, that sort of stuff.
You will have, it'll be necessary by code to have some windows in that basement area for egress, is that right?
Correct.
Will those windows also satisfy code for the bedroom requirements?
Um...
Would it be big enough to satisfy?
Yeah, I mean, egress is egress, right? I guess it's a, the dimension is the, doesn't discriminate on whether it's for a living space or a bedroom space.
I understand that, but will they, typically, it's smaller than a bedroom window would have to be, unless I'm mistaken.
I think egress is, it goes by just a square footage, or square inches of the opening of the window.
Right.
So the basement would require two means of egress. One of them would be the stairs going up, and then the second would be a window.
But there's, but there's a separate requirement for bedrooms, right? It has to have.
Yeah, so if you were correct, if you were to incorporate a bedroom into that basement, that bedroom would need to have its own means of egress.
Well, but it could, but it could be the window that's in the basement for its own means of egress.
So long as the bedroom was, so long it was in the bedroom area.
Right, so this is where I'm, I think you know where I'm going. You've got a bathroom down there now and you have a window which is large enough to satisfy code for egress. Would that window also be large enough to satisfy code for a habitable room for a bedroom? So could somebody come in and put some partitions up and get another bedroom?
I mean, would we require a building permit and, you know, the same way as it would on the first floor or the second floor?
I understand, but I'm asking about the size, do you know with the size, let's just talk about the size of the window, right? So you know that the size of the window you're providing in these basements is big enough for, to meet code for a bedroom? It's a very simple question.
Correct, yeah. My understanding is there is no differentiation between an egress window for a just living area or basement space versus an egress window for a bedroom. But now by code in New York State, egress windows are required on, in, in any basement on whether they're, they're finished or unfinished.
But it's also true, I think in code, that you need to have, for the size of the bedroom, you need to have a minimum amount of window for light and air.
Correct, that's a different calculation.
I know, that's the calculation that I'm asking about, not egress.
I think he's after, is there not a dual standard for the two?
I don't know, I could, I could find out about the light and vent calculation.
Well, I, well, yes, it'd be good to know.
Sure.
I don't know, we'd have to check with the building inspector. You'd be checking it, checking it anyway.
Regardless.
Yeah.
Maybe another, maybe another way to phrase the question, is the size of the window sized for egress, is it also sized to allow a bedroom? Because they could be two different sizes. The egress could be one dimension and the requirements for light for a bedroom.
I'll, I'll find out the answer to that. And we'll clarify for you.
And if we did the smaller one, that would preclude the bedroom coming in.
I just, I promise you it's going to come up and probably good to get the answer sooner rather than later.
Yep, we'll, we'll get that clarified.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, James? Is the garage, is there garage access to the basements in those units?
No.
Okay.
No, we typically don't provide that on, on our townhomes. There's just not enough space to get it, get it all in there.
And how high would the ceiling be in the basement?
We'll do, it goes, it works out to be a finished ceiling height of about eight-foot nine inches.
Okay. So again, so it would qualify for living space under code if, if we're so converted. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we, when we, when we build our model homes, we spend a significant amount of resources in the basement to really, you know, dress them up.
Right. So I, I need a little help on, on the bedroom counts again for just the townhome area.
Sure.
Just forget the cupola building for now. Prior to your making this most recent revision, how many three-bedroom homes did you have?
Twenty.
Twenty. And now you're asking for an extra nine in order to, to what you think would better satisfy the market for these extra nine homes, right?
Correct.
So what led you to the first 20? How did you arrive at that number?
That was just what was, that's been the case, yes.
Okay, but that doesn't answer the question. How did, okay, how did we get there? How did everybody get to that number?
It was, we were actually looking for, as I recall, a larger number of three bedrooms. It was somewhat of a, it was a negotiated number, if you will, so that they were primarily two-bedroom units and a smaller number of three-bedroom units.
Okay.
So 20 and 71.
So are those, do those, could you help me here? Thanks. Those 20, how many of those 20 units have drop slabs like these nine you're asking for?
We can go around, you know, we, we did have to, again, there were smaller footprint units, so we were kind of careful in where we thought they would be placed around the site. In some places, we needed to kind of pick up a little bit of room on side yard setbacks. I don't know the answer to that, yeah.
On the site, which is, how many acres is this site? I mean.
This part of the site?
The whole, yeah, the.
Thirty, thirty-one.
Thirty-one acres. So I, I guess the question I, where I'm going with this is that I can understand the condition of this particular cross-section which is driving this unit type for you and this demographic for this unit type. But I don't see other conditions on the site that require this kind of drop slab. So why not convert some of the 20, nine of the 20 that you have elsewhere on the site, back to two-bedroom and let these be nine of your 20 three-bedrooms?
Yeah, if we can flip back, Andy, to, to either any of the site plans. So there, actually, the, the overlaying one is probably the toughest to look at, but so there were some, you know, Casey can help me out here. There were some areas where if you see like where the original plan was in the red and where we ultimately ended up in the blue. So we, there were some areas where we reorientated the buildings, you know, kind of shifted roads, squeezed some separation. So we, we, we do have, in places where we are constricted with side yard separations or front yard separations or rear yard separations, we did, you know, kind of map out where we, we thought these smaller footprint units would go.
But I just, I guess I'd have to look at all the, the controlling lines here, but it seems to me, I'm sorry, let me just finish my, my thought. It seems to me there's ample room on the site to move a few feet in order to get those units to be two-bedroom units, larger footprint units. And maybe I'm wrong, but I'd see a lot of, a lot of area on the site.
Well, there's another issue too that we spoke about and we were promised that it would be considered if you're a little bit tight on space, and that was over here. We were promised that at least it would be considered, you know, putting some of the houses over there. I'm not quite sure how it works now in terms of what the lot is, et cetera. I don't know if that's a different lot, et cetera. But that was something that was, and certainly that's level, doesn't require any of this drop-down, so it might be suitable there. We had always thought it would be desirable from the standpoint that it would give much more of a village effect as you immediately drive in with homes on both sides. But that certainly was something that we were promised would be looked at and anyway.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I can, Casey Devlin with Toll Brothers, I can address the drop slab issue. This road F is where we have drop slabs for all the units on road F. Previously, this section of nine townhomes were not proposed as drop slabs. To address some of the comments on our prior submission, we had reduced the height of, height of this retaining wall, two feet or three feet.
Right, right.
And what happens here is we need to step up to a stormwater infiltration system in this large field. So we had the opportunity to keep that road two or three feet higher and eliminate the drop slabs here, but it caused a, an issue with a higher retaining wall. So we were sort of balancing that, you know, we need the stormwater system, which is generally at grade, you know, stepped down slightly to, to a retaining wall. So we're trying to manage that, you know, grade change and stormwater.
Right. Fair enough. But that's for those particular units which are.
These, these are where the other drop slabs are.
Right.
On road F.
Are there 20 of them there? In other words.
There's not a total of 20 drop slabs.
Right.
I think there's, you know, there's nine, 10, 11, 12. There's 13 units on road F.
So I guess, I guess what I'm suggesting is that I can appreciate, I, I really appreciate what you've done at this corner that I think we're all concerned about.
Right.
I mean, the cross-section, I think, just says it all for me. But it seems like we only solved for that, right? And didn't solve for keeping the, the bedroom count at 20 three-bedroom units. And I'm just asking, is there no way in the rest of the site to change some of the ones that you have designed as three-bedroom units that don't have the drop slab condition in order to get back under what is the expected unit count, a bedroom count?
Right.
And the reason I'm saying that is I actually think that for my purposes, my purposes, my opinion is that more bedrooms is better from the way I see it. But it's not my decision to, alone to, to say anything, to, to make that decision. You may end up with some real pushback on the extra bedrooms and I, I'm not, I don't know whether you will, but you may.
Sure, no, we understand that.
So I'm suggesting that maybe there's a way to solve the problem without going through the agony of trying to get the approvals.
Right. So we, we, look, it's not going to become a point where we're going to have to say we have to take our grading changes off the table because we can't make the bedrooms work.
I appreciate that.
But, you know, what we're also trying to look to do is to, is to take the, what spectrum of housing, the product that we do have to offer our customers and to kind of spread, spread that out over the, the entire job as well. You know, all things being equal, when we looked at this from, from the beginning, we're now dealing with a set of circumstances and potentially some impacts to what we believe is our ability to market the jobs successfully that we weren't looking at four or five months ago. And we're, we're just, you know, we're, in a spirit of compromise, we're, you know, we're going to work with, with the town and we, and we hope that the town will reciprocate and, and at least meet us halfway.
Are you saying that the market is now tipping more towards families than empty nesters?
No, what I meant to say is that if we're, if we were to take, you know, all this, the majority of a specific certain, the three-bedroom units and, and locate them in one isolated part of the job, you know, we don't, we don't market our community that way, we don't build our homes that way. So we would like to kind of, you know, have a, have a good variety of housing choices regardless of when somebody walked in the hall, the door to purchase from us.
That, that doesn't, this plan doesn't represent that point of view. It just doesn't. So, but again, as far as I'm concerned, I think more bedrooms are better, but you're, you may end up in a process that's going to be something that may be something you're going to have to fight for. That's all I'm saying. And it seems to me that in site plan terms, that, to me, if you just solve for 20 units, right, just solve for 20 units with these drop slabs where you have them because of grading conditions, there have to be seven, eight, nine, 10 more units where you don't have to have three-bedroom units, but you choose to. And my suggestion is you might want to rethink that.
Is it Plan B or A?
Plan A, baby.
Maybe Plan A.
Yeah, maybe Plan A.
Yep. Should I keep going?
Sure.
Yeah. So this section is taken a little bit further east, unit 29, 26 rather, which was the beginning of the I block. And the sections here are more similar in the approved site plan. Here we have a parking lot on the left side, the parking lot for Lifetime Fitness. The units were raised slightly above the roadway and similar nature here. It's, it's up about a foot here from what it is there, but we've tried to balance out across the entry drive.
Very good.
In terms of variety of facade treatment, the architects, Toll's architects have looked at different combinations of brick siding and stone to provide that variety within still the same stylistic vocabulary which they set up as, as the proposed townhomes. With regard to the amenity, resident amenity building, down the bottom left is a site plan of the existing guest house. That guest house was built in three different pieces. This is the garage sticking out the back. And the, the, both the structural assessment of the building envelope, the building envelope, rather, and the layout itself don't particularly lend itself to a compact functioning amenity building. What Toll is proposing is to make that building more compact, designed specifically for its purpose, and then have the ability, these are sample of the type of treatment they'd be looking to do to both complement the townhome buildings as well as the cupola building. So we think at the end of the day, it would both age better than a rehab of the existing added-on building and work better both aesthetically and functionally.
I didn't see anything in the report that was rendered to you by Structural Workshop, but it would be helpful if they would just maybe sign off with a sentence or two about there not being any historical significance to this, this particular building. I presume there, there isn't, but it would be good just to have that signed off in there.
Yeah, I'm not sure they would be the one to sign off. I think in the original secret review, all of the adapted residential buildings on the site, the Bedford Valley House, which is next to the auditorium today, which was used by Senator Clinton's detail for some time. Because of its age, over 50 years old, it was deemed by OPRHP to be, I'm not sure the exact phrase, but historically significant. So in that house, and we would see the same for this house, we would document more specifically what the nature of those architecture features are. And we'd have to go back to, as we did for the Bedford Valley House, to SHPO for its assessment. So we, we would do that as part of this.
Okay.
Next slide, please. This is just to, again, the same slide I showed before, just to indicate that we are working with Mr. Coleman, particularly in the area to the east of the townhomes, on that slope above the wetland and the buffer planting, which now is included in the drawing from, as part of the retail site plan approval, in order to make those complement one another and to flow smoothly from one to the other.
Can you give us an overview very quickly in terms of the, at least from your perspective, the need for this, this constructed berm? I know it's a concern of Steve's.
The berm was there for a couple of reasons. One, to help balance cut and fill within the site. And two, to provide additional height for the planting that would go on the berm to provide some, not full screening of the units from Cowden Lane, but intermittent screening, if you will, so that the, those plants would have a higher place to start from. So it was always intended to be berm. The, the nature of the berm, where we've now talked to, to Steve about doing a couple, looking at a couple of things, a combination of boulder walls is the one that seems most naturalistic to provide a little bit of higher elevation for some of the, from some of the new trees without having the berm be so large in one spot. So a more undulating berm with some intermittent boulder walls, I think, would make them, it's basically a meadow out there, it's a sloping meadow. So that would, I think, feel better, feel more like a sloping meadow than perhaps this plant was.
Will that save some of the existing vegetation he's trying to save?
It saves a few. The vegetation out there is, was not planted, it's, and so it's not frankly in great condition, some of it. And so in terms of functioning and screening, we think that newly planted material will do well in the middle, middle and longer term than some of the existing trees that are out there.
If you were to, let's see if I can read the existing grades and new, if you were to, if you were to actually just go ahead and, I'm not recommending this, but I'm just trying to just put one of the options on the, on the table here. If you were to actually put a retaining wall along the edge of the road, let's see, we've got edge, we've got road here at 426, you've got earth at 420. If you were to put like a, I don't know what it would end up being, how high, once you, you know, get down the way here, four to eight-foot retaining wall just along that edge and just let the existing grade go up to it. What about that as an option? Did you, that doesn't solve your cut and fill problem.
No, it doesn't. And we, and we actually looked at that with Steve. He proposed, he suggested a, a, a road that paralleled the, a road, a wall that paralleled the road but about 15 feet off to allow for a planting spot on top. There's some issues from a structural point of view, we'd have to use a certain kind of wall as opposed to another kind of wall where the, you wouldn't want to plant on top. But in that instance, it didn't really save more trees because you still wanted to do some grading on the backside. We didn't want to drop it just onto the, onto the slope. So we can, we're looking at, at both options now, both the wall and the boulder wall.
Good.
And we'll come up with something that I think will work for both him and for us.
Do you know the history of the, of the topography of this site? Was this originally filled at one point in time? Was this originally filled at one point in time? This looks like an unnatural slope here. Either that or the top of this thing has been graded out.
I think the top was graded out for the parking, in, in my view, but there was a lot of parking that readers put in.
Right.
And I think it was, it was filled prior to that, so.
Graded out, and this was, this was the excess earth was pushed down the, down slope, right?
Yeah.
Because it looks like today, it, I don't want to be too severe about this, but it sort of has the image of like a landfill kind of earth sort of.
Well, no, it's a, it's a sloping meadow.
It's a sloping meadow.
Sort of a gentle sloping meadow.
It's a, clearly a manmade sloping meadow. So, and I remember last time we got together, we talked about finding some way to make that more naturalistic in, when you, when you put fill on it, find a way to shape it to make it more natural looking. And I'm not sure that, I'm personally not sure that boulder walls are, it takes real, a real artist to make a boulder wall look like it's natural. Instead, it's going to look like, more likely, it'll look like a bunch of boulders that were piled up. So.
We're hoping to do better than that.
I know you are, but I've rarely seen it done well, rarely seen it, it's hard to do, it really is. Take somebody out there really knowing what they're doing and, and taking command of the situation and caring to do it. And as a consequence, I wonder if clearly engineered stone walls, you know, that would, would be something that would be more attractive and more appropriate and be more successful, terrace stone walls of some kind.
Well, we can look at that as well, and we'll bring you the options, and we'll review them with Steve and bring you the options and.
Great.
And that's essentially the essence of the, the visible essence of our submission, the SWIP. We can go over the SWIP page by page if you like, but.
No.
Thank you though.
I have more questions about retaining walls while we're on the subject of walls and engineered walls and everything. So I did have a pointer at one.
Take it, sure.
So the area that we've been talking about on the east side, you know, if that does get built eventually with the retaining wall, there's a lot of space there in between where the wall would be and its view from the road for a lot of planting to be put in and make it look very naturalistic, or do intermittent walls or, you know, however that works out. But I am more concerned about the retaining walls that are on the loop road over here and what that face is going to look like, and if that is going to sort of loom. I, I think in the narrative or in the schematics, it shows it as maybe two, anywhere from two feet high, a retaining wall of two feet high going up to about 14 feet high. A two-foot-high retaining wall is not much of a, of an impact visually, it could be quite attractive, but a 14-foot retaining wall is, is a wall. And if it's very close to the road, it could look like a fortress wall. So I'm just curious how that might be handled.
Well, I, I think in the scale of the space, the 14 feet is not that high, and we would be planting in front of it, not dissimilar to what Tom was describing for the other side. So we don't anticipate that looking out of place. You're looking across 800 parking spaces. You're driving along that road and it is, you know, landscaped along the face of the wall. 14 feet at its highest point is, you know, a story and a half with evergreen and deciduous trees in front of it. So I, I don't see that it's, and it's internal to the site. We have, you know, we have a 100-plus acre site, but as you start to compartmentalize it into different areas, and this being the East Village, and we're trying to contain the grading within the East Village and provide for, you know, solutions to all sides of the issue, we do end up with some walls. We are, as Mr. Sealy has asked for, you know, they would be properly documented and we believe they would be softened by the landscaping that's put in front of them.
How much land do you have there for landscaping? If you've got a, a wall face that supports the East Village, but you know, you're going to have a lot of people coming up visually, that's their, they're coming up the loop road from, from Zesalmel Parkway, that's sort of their entrance way onto the site. And so on one side, they're going to see a, a parking lot, on the other side, they're going to see this looming wall, so.
Well, except in the, in the scope of your drive, you know, you're just going to see your wall, and, and this, you know, your drive starts back here and it goes all the way around, you'll see some townhomes, you'll see some of the Morehouse townhomes above a wall, the auditorium and, and another series of townhomes. So I think it's, it's not like you're driving along the wall for a, a long distance in the scale of the space.
I would.
What's the length of the 14-foot section and, and where does it occur? Is it because of undulations in the topography that we're, we have this, this area? Is it in the middle? Is it at the end of the wall?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can, I can look at that for you.
The elevation rises, so it's lower here, so you're probably have your, you're larger wall there.
But the actual, the topography is irregular, so I wonder if it's just going to be a, you know, a solid just going from two feet to 14 feet? How long will it be 14 feet? I mean, there's different, there's different kinds of 14 feet.
Sure.
A 14 feet that goes for 100 feet in length, that's, looms much more than something that's 20 feet long.
Yeah, I'll find that out.
So that kind of schematic actually would be, I think, good to see.
How it would be treated as, you know, with a veneer face or the kind of stone that would be used, the kind of plantings that would be put there.
And whether it would be just a solid wall or if there's going to be any room for a step down so that you have it in pieces, maybe to seven-foot sections, whatever it might be. Again, to Sealy's point, I think a solid 14-foot castle wall is, is imposing. But if it's a short, short amount of space, we can, you know, perhaps work with it.
Yeah, I would recommend they have good samples because my opinion, the wall down on Washington, the material they pick for that doesn't seem too natural to me. Yeah, I was just thinking about that. I think it's critical the planning board knows the sections, the elevations, and sees good pictures and see really good photographs of the types of walls you guys propose, because that will make them, make a better decision for what they're doing.
That wall is, in most places, much taller than 14 feet.
I don't know, is it? 14 feet is a tall wall.
It would be helpful to do a comparison even of what you're proposing here versus what people have seen and are familiar with on Washington Avenue.
But the bottom line is going to be the type of material that they're facing, that's what everyone sees, and it's going to be very natural. I think the wall down on Washington is not a natural-looking wall in any way, shape or form. That's just my opinion.
I agree.
Would agree with that.
And there might also be ways to mitigate that with, I don't know, certain kinds of landscaping, some creeping ivy, something to sort of.
We can plant it from both the top and the bottom.
Well, is there anything, is there any way in those units, in that section, where we can, we can work with the topography the way it is and perhaps the buildings themselves will be, you know, on a slope, on a slant? Since it, where you have the driveway, driveway's out here in that section?
I think it would be, you're not going to gain very much with fiddling with the building because we're, we're working with fairly fixed grades in the, in the lawn area because of the infiltration that takes place there. We're using most of those, both of those large lawn areas for infiltration, stormwater practices, so they're set at a particular elevation.
But your garages are here, right? And this, where are the garages?
The garage on the backside.
So if you were to drop WK and Y, you would have to increase the delta between the garage slab and the first floor slab.
As Casey was saying, we're already dropping those.
You're already pretty far there as it is, right?
For that situation.
So the only, that would be the only way to get the wall lower, is to drop those garages.
Well, to drop the whole site right in here.
I don't think they could drop the front because isn't there stormwater?
Yes, that's why they can't, right. I mean, this, this is now your control point is right in here, right? And then you only have so much you can give going this way and then you're done.
Then you're done. Maybe squeeze it in a foot or two. But then that starts to mess up with the garages here. Do you know the distance, do you know the distance between those 10 parking spaces, the wall and the property line? Is there about 20, 25 feet there?
It looks like about 25 feet there, yes. If the, if the parking space is 10 feet and the road is 20.
And right now, we're proposing just a single wall, right?
Yes.
Okay. So there may be some room to do a step like somebody suggested.
Right.
I think it's also important to know how long that 14 feet is.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Need a lot more information about the wall.
Yes, yeah.
I, I don't know if there was, I think Felix threatened to speak before about the, the housing on the other side. Maybe you can give us an update, you know, I raised that one issue about the alternative housing off there, but.
Felix, Tony, I'm sorry, what'd you, what'd you ask? I was, we were talking stone walls in the back with Casey.
Right, right, okay, we're, we're talking about perhaps houses on that side. We had talked about that and.
Yes, certainly I remember when we talked about it years ago. And it subsequently became impossible to consider. The parcel on the right-hand, left-hand side belongs to somebody else, it's been sold. There's also a wetland up in the corner, and it was also determined that we would need to go back to the town board for a whole new PCDP and the timing associated with that would have basically negated the toll arrangement. And for those of you who've been out there recently, the site is, you know, there's, there's a lot going on and we're trying to get it to stabilize. And so the, all the time that was associated with reviewing that, let alone the fact that it no longer belongs to the same folks, made that really impossible. I think that's why the Toll folks worked so hard with yourselves and with Tom, trying to maintain that TND around that corner, because that corner, that's resulted in this little bit of this bedroom conversation that was going on this evening, was a, was a big engineering adjustment in order to try to maintain TND that we were not able to deliver on the left-hand side of the entry road. So I don't know if that's a satisfactory answer, but it's the truth.
No, that's fine, thank you.
So Felix, I'm sorry, just clarification on the, the property ownership. This tenant now owns, this is like, and it's parking, you said? Or is it this piece has been sold?
The, the left-hand side of the, of the main entry.
Here?
I don't know if it's right to that, Andy. Everything to the left of the entry road belongs to a new party that was sold.
Is it two years now?
So much time has passed, it's hard to remember the dates. But, you know, probably a couple of years ago, that was sold to the retail development company, which is not related to the primary owner of this property, which was Summit Greenfield. And so the, the property's being all divided up, as, as one would expect. Mr. Balter owns the 200 building after he purchased it and built it, which by the way, if you haven't gone in and seen it.
Terrific.
I didn't build it, so it's, I'm not being self-serving, it's magnificent.
It's really great.
It's absolutely magnificent.
It's really great.
Well, Mr. Balter managed to get a couple more bedrooms, which Sabrina pointed out to us a little while ago, so, you know, there's.
It's a good project.
So that's the end of my presentation, be happy to take any.
Besides the large wall we talked about with the 10 parallel spots and potentially a wall down below where Steve, was there any other spot where we have a significant wall we should be focused on?
I don't believe so, but when we look at the. No, we, we've managed to remove the walls from that corner by dropping the buildings.
Okay.
We had some walls in the past version.
So, I'm sorry.
Just those two locations.
But I will, I will look as we, there's a, there's a short wall back here as we try to preserve some of the trees there in the back, in that back corner. And we'll, we'll look at all the walls as we look at these, come back to you with these wall situations.
So I'm curious about the, the Wallace Auditorium and the effort that's going on there in coordination relation to property boundaries here and what you guys are trying to do and trying to achieve. Is there, Sabrina, we've been seeing various documents come across our table for information. What's the status of the relationship here and how are we working? How is the town working with, 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 I guess in this case, it would be still Summit Greenfield?
Yes.
And would it also be, it'd also be Toll Brothers, right?
Toll is a contract mandate.
Right. Are there hard lines that have been drawn, which are the property line, that say you're on this side and we're on that side and never the two shall meet? Or are there conversations that are appropriate and going on about how this building will end up sitting in the landscape in relation to the new development around it?
We have requested as part of this application to see a subdivision application. So that subdivision application will help us put more refinement around who owns what and where those lines are and what is the result of discussions that this board has been having regarding the auditorium and the relationship of that auditorium to this residential area.
Well, this board hasn't had, I don't, I missed a couple of meetings, have we had a conversation about the details of?
Not the details, because we don't have a subdivision plan in play yet and we're not sure where that line falls in relation to the auditorium and how it affects the environmental review.
Say subdivision plan, are you talking about just the parceling? Or are you talking about the details of the improvements on the Wallace Auditorium site?
My understanding is that there are two separate issues. One is the, the lines, the property lines of the auditorium, and I think we were almost reaching agreement in the sense of written sidelines and setbacks. As far as the improvements to the Wallace Auditorium, we haven't gotten anywhere in relation to what improvements we would like, how to protect the residences from the building, from the activities at the building, so on and so forth, other than this applicant showing a fence on the property.
And I think you need to establish those lines for property ownership because I think there are a number of issues regarding various easements. Once those lines are established, and of course, you can't talk about easements.
We've been looking for a subdivision plan for quite a while.
Right.
And hasn't been delivered, and we're asking for it again now. Who's the author of that plan?
The next slide actually, Matt, is a subdivision diagram that shows our current thinking on the subdivision line. The, we have drawn a line around the auditorium, the auditorium, if you, if you flip back to the very first slide, right? So in the PDCP. In the PDCP, the, the line was fairly tight to the building. We've had a series of, of discussions with, with the town staff and representatives related to providing on all sides additional room and additional access opportunities and what we show on the subdivision diagram, have you jumped to that again? It's both that, that line and its relationship to the adjoining residential area. The original red line is the approved PDCP and the subdivision, the preliminary subdivision line that was drawn at the time of the PDCP, showing the line going down the center of the road and the center of, the center of the entry drive and the center of the, the loop road. That inadvertently added paving in what we considered to be a common road into the coverage requirement of the PDCP. And so we're proposing that that line be now relocated to the blue line on the inside of the curb, as it would be if that was a public street and that was a right-of-way, inside of the curb rather. And that would involve in terms of maintaining the 31.2 acres, bumping out that line up here by about 120 feet in that location and that location. The buildings would not change in their location, nothing would change except for the line. But that's an action that the town board would have to take because the 31.2 acres are zone MFPD and the area up here is zoned office.
Right, right. So that would have to be changed.
Yes.
So I wondered if I may, if I could add something to it. So the original, one of the original conditions of approval, I think it was the zone change, was that we convey the auditorium, which we did for a dollar. It was in the form of a lease. I actually don't even know if you took the auditorium yet or if you're still just giving us the dollar. But irrespective, it's a, it's a really good example of kind of what's going on in the site, because as the town began, its thoughts for the auditorium began to evolve, its need for more land came with it. And as it needed more land, that had some effect on what Toll was doing and ultimately had some effect on what was going on with the subdivision. The subdivision, I'm way behind in completing the subdivision, and if you remember from your original approvals, in order to create your ratables, you created 91 tax part, 91 lots within the townhome environment. So all that's kind of on hold until these little boundary lines ultimately get set. It's been very fluid between ourselves and the town relative to the land around the auditorium. We think that's going to sort itself out real quickly here. But what we've done is we've created a whole series of land, land leases, which are overlaid with the tax lots that the town gave us, so that it would have some conformity to what we think the future is. But we need the auditorium to get set in stone so that we can then make that part of the subdivision for that's conveyed, for that piece of the conveyance.
I think what we're missing is a master subdivision for the entire site.
That's exactly what I was just thinking.
Yeah, we're way behind on that, we wish we had that.
But we have a more pressing issue. But we have a more pressing issue. I would like to raise a more pressing issue, and it has to do with the postal service.
Your timing couldn't be better. Whole Foods called today to ask for their address.
Well, and we're receiving notices from the post office wanting to get a sense, because they're having difficulty with the way it's being addressed and identified in the E901 system. So, you know, the subdivision is becoming ever more pressing that that subdivision take form and shape sooner rather than later.
And we couldn't echo that more, but we need an action by the town board. And we've been in conversations with them relative to some lot-line adjustments and I think some coverage pieces. But Sabrina, and I'm going to repeat myself, literally today, I received a phone call from Whole Foods, who needs to apply for certain applications and needs a formal address. And what our response is, we don't have one. Because they're planning to, their scheduled opening is the beginning of November. So, this is all starting to run into one another.
Well, so, my concern was that, unless I'm mistaken, these lines are being shaped by some preliminary site planning for the needs of the auditorium in terms of driveways and access to the building and handicap access and other facilities that need to be around the building. And there's some site planning going on, which is, is an attempt to get this facility to fit within the planning that's going on, on the residential portion of it, and the roadway which serves all of this. And I was curious about who is doing that site, the preliminary site planning? Will that work?
Well, town staff have reviewed the boundaries and the preferences for the boundaries based on the area necessary to make the improvements that the town board is interested in making on the site.
But who's planning those? There's a drawing here that locates those things.
Correct. And we submitted comments to Summit.
And who did that drawing?
We did.
We did.
Oh, town did it?
The town did it.
Sabrina, Terry and I.
Yeah, the town staff reflected what the town board was wanting.
Okay.
Hasn't that memo been circulated to the planning board?
Yes, it has.
Yeah, I was not aware who was the author of the design itself.
They worked off of the map they gave us. Just tweaked it, tweaked it.
Well, wait, okay, so wait a minute. I'm sorry. So, there's a drawing here that shows a roadway, a driveway going to the back of the building and other facilities that are new facility, you know, to serve. Did you guys do that based on requests from the town? Or did the town, was the town the author of that drawing?
The town originated as the author of that drawing, which was then sent to the applicant. The applicant responded and then we responded.
So, originally, the town sent to the applicant a drawing and the applicant responded with a different drawing.
Okay. But it's...
Slightly different, somewhat different.
Okay. But I understand the negotiation, but the actual layout of the facilities, the facilities for the auditorium are authored by the town?
Correct.
That's right.
It's not really a negotiation, it's more of accommodation.
Understood.
Yep.
Everything has gotten much more complicated.
Understood.
It seems to me it's going to stay very, very elastic until we start to tie these lines down.
Does this get folded into the work we're doing as a comprehensive look at the whole thing? Comprehensive design?
Yeah, it's going to be an overall, there's going to be a master subdivision.
It's a subdivision plan.
And these issues will be coming before you, yeah.
Okay.
But the planning board is not going to be involved in deciding what those boundaries around the wall, the former Wallace Auditorium, is that that's between the applicant and the town board?
Correct.
So, is there any thought about when it might be completed, this elastic discussion?
I think the elastic discussion regarding the actual needs surrounding the auditorium from an area perspective are pretty, we're pretty close to agreement.
Well, the reason I ask it is that, is that certain decisions about getting to the back of the building, getting vehicles off of the loop road into the back of the building, and those things drive elevations. I mean, they drive topography. They drive retaining walls. They drive hard improvements that have consequences within a residential environment. And if, if the parcel lines are being, and it's logical that they would be, are being driven by all of those improvements, then, I mean, I'm not so sure that we ought to be hard, I understand you guys need to come to an agreement on this so everybody can move forward. But I'm not so sure that we're solving for the right thing here. I mean, I'm not so sure that, I'm not so sure that we need to get handicap parking to the back of the building. I mean, I don't understand that. So, things like that really have a consequence, because the grades can be quite dramatic in here.
Absolutely, which is why I copied the planning board on these discussions, because you're having a much different conversation than the town board is having, than certain town staff are integrating into these decisions. So, where we are right now is different parties' preferences regarding access to this bill, to the auditorium. And, you know, there were, there are preferences from every different side of the building. And then there's Plan B if we can't get what we need. And including the planning board in the communications is because you are discussing and addressing those other elements which affect the back of the building, which affect the sides of the building. So, no hard and fast decision has been made. These are just trying to come together with more dialogue and more direction.
So, at what point in time will it end up on our agenda for our input before these lines get drawn and agreed to?
Getting drawn is one thing, and you'll ultimately approve as part of the subdivision the lines.
The parcelization.
But it seems to me, I mean, it's more than just the needs and of the operations. I mean, for example, depending upon where we put these things and how extensive they are, it's going to impact stormwater. And with the base, I see, I'm looking at this drawing, there's a stormwater management area, you know, proximate between some of these houses and the building. How big is it? How large is it? It's going to depend on how much we put in terms of pavement around this building.
Well, we were working around that. We realized we couldn't change that stormwater, which is all underground, I believe.
This one's, well, the drawing I'm looking at, some is underground, some is not.
We didn't, we didn't want to change that.
We were very cognizant from a staff perspective, at least Bob and I, is where they had existing infrastructure for the site as they're proposing it right now. We tried to accommodate that, you know. We had initially wanted access through the main road in the town home development to the back of the building. And we were told DEP would not allow parking over their infiltration system. You know, so these are things that through our recommendations to the town board and then our subsequent letters to Summit, you know, we had factored all of these things in here.
I'm sure that the work has all been done professionally and I really have no criticism of the work per se. My concern is if we were to be sitting here and somebody were to come to us with an application for something which is actually very complicated. I mean, this is, there's a lot going on on this small piece of property here. We would, this board would be spending a lot of time looking at this and thinking about different options and why this and why not that. And I just am asking, is there a point in this process before we get too far down the road when, where we can have input into this and maybe begin to shape some of these things before we go too far down the road? I mean, we deal, we asked applicants to come in early when they are willing to so that we can help sort of make the process more rational. And I guess I'm suggesting that maybe we ought to be thinking about that in this case.
Well, let me ask Andy, because I think, Andy, is this something that the next time you appear, we can have a larger discussion regarding that boundary and the needs of this residential development versus the needs of the auditorium?
Well, I think they're, the answer's yes, but I think they're two separate issues. We can incorporate this diagram, there's a, into the updated master subdivision plan. And that will present my best understanding of where all these lines go. For instance, there are going to be lines around the 200 building, because that building will be subdivided. Right now, we can't subdivide it because it's non-conforming with the BRO20 zone. So, it will take a town board action to do that. Now, maybe it gets pushed to the fore by us submitting this diagram as our master subdivision, which needs these blessings from these various groups to take eventual effect.
Well, Andy, doesn't that make sense sooner rather than later? Because ultimately, won't the town board be asking the planning board's opinion on the proposed rezoning?
Yes, yes, I can do that now.
Start outlining the criteria as, and I think that's part of our, the request that's in Sabrina's memo, to get this information to you sooner rather than later.
Yeah, and we will do that. It's been, we've had it in pieces and we can put it all together into one.
That'd be, that'd be great, I think.
Great.
I have one more thing.
Sure, sure.
One after you.
We talked before, and maybe it's just not time yet and you're scheduled to do this. We talked before about really needing to get a lot more detail on the streetscape, especially that area which is on the entry road, or call it Main Street, right? You guys have done a terrific job, I think, in good faith. And you really did, I think, a great job in getting these units close to the street. Now, we want to set that section, like I said, it says it all, it doesn't actually say it all. There's a lot more detail that we need to know between the building wall and the curb and be sure that we're doing something which integrates that neighborhood with the rest of the Main Street that Felix has built. So, we'll be looking for a lot of that detail down the road.
We can blow up that street section and focus on that.
Yeah, look at the work that you guys did, Felix's team did for the rest of that street, that level of detail. And if you could find a way to get this to work together, we'd like to see that. Just to be sure that you understand, that's one of the things we'll be looking for.
Mine's, I think mine's a yes or no.
Okay. I'll try.
If I understand correctly, the blue line is adjusting because you're carving out space here.
Both carving out space for the auditorium and adjusting the...
So, does that mean you have 122 feet to expand out here?
We're not expanding.
You're not, okay. But if you wanted to for grading and things like that, do you have now the ability to explore over there if it can help you with grading over here?
I think we had the ability, because it's internal to the site. That's, both sides of the red line are Summit Greenfield.
It's a paper line, really.
Both sides are Summit Greenfield as of this moment, until the bus.
That was my point with regard to adding the extra room to put your two-bedroom units here where you have three-bedroom units. You have room to move in order to make it work.
If we, you know, our thought has been that the units don't move. But if the planning board were willing to consider moving the units, that might free up a little bit more.
I don't, again, I'm for more bedrooms, so for me, it's a win-win. You guys solve the corner and you have more bedrooms. But I'm guessing that there are going to be some other opinions on more bedrooms. And you might want to assess whether you want to...
Well, we would stay with the same 91 units, but that would, you know, the...
No, but I think the bedrooms is the issue, the bedroom count, the school district and...
At what point do you need to re-figure that, to readdress that? And also, you know, what we were talking about with the basements before has some, and whether there's a possibility for conversion into more bedrooms, has some application to some of the layouts, which I don't remember which ones they were at this point. But when we were looking, I think when you were here in October and you had given us a lot of different floor plans to look at, some of them had rooms that were 12 by 19 or, you know, in that large category that were not spoken for. I mean, they were not bedrooms, but they could easily become bedrooms. So, there's, along with the request for 20 additional bedrooms, there's some other rooms that aren't in play. There's other space that's at play that may become bedroom space down the line or has the possibility to become bedroom space down the line.
Yep. I'm intrigued by Greg's observation. If you pick up that extra space, if it, if, study, if, it allays some of the constraints that you already have. And if it does and gives you more opportunity to avoid the big giant wall, I'm calling a big giant wall now 14 feet, I've moved on, I guess. But if it gives us some flexibility, gives you some flexibility, and you're going to be applying for it anyway, so it'll be zoned for this use, it'll be part of it. And if it frees up different options for you and for us, I understand, you know, this is obviously this willing, this desire to move forward quickly and then this is where it's going to be, it's set. But, you know, that's not necessarily where we come from. We come from where what might be the best thing for this site, the best thing for the town in the long term, not the short term, how fast can we get out of here? So, I'm intrigued by that. I'm not so sure it offers any opportunities whatsoever. But I think it should be something, I think the attitude of, look, this is where we are and we're not changing it is not the right one. And I think if it offers any sort of relief and alternatives, I think it should be explored. And go that route anyway with the town board.
My statement that it wouldn't be changed was not to be stubborn. It was to say that this would be the envelope that would remain.
Yeah, of course, I understand.
I think it would be helpful for everyone to kind of understand, just spend a moment on schedules. So, we know how long it took us to get here. Well, we're under construction. So, this week, the paving plant's opened. So, we've started paving Main Street. And Whole Foods has scheduled their grand opening on November 7th. Lifetime Fitness is opening in October. All the parking lots that are around the office building, which we're all in flux because we have to move the utilities through, are all scheduled to be completed in the next couple of months. For the past couple of months, our tenants have been enduring all sorts of nightmares because we've been closing roads. We're about to open the road that connects to the high school. And we're, and this spring and summer, when the school closes, we're going to be doing all the road work. The folks who've come in to operate the auditorium, I don't want to say hate us, but they're not happy with us because they've been running all these events and have no place to park and they can't get people in, they can't keep people out. So, we're kind of anxious to get the site stabilized. So, I think there's lots of good ideas. We just need to execute, we need, we need direction. Sabrina and her staff have been working really hard to sort out the land around the auditorium. We need direction and then we need to make a decision so we can complete the task and stabilize the site, because the site is very unstable and will soon, we will not be offered the ability to continue to move things. You remember, the DEP has that five-acre disturbance rule? And so, we've been, they come out all the time. We're always, what amount of the site we can disturb, we're constantly being observed and governed. Very soon, the retail development portion needs to exit and the Toll folks will then be allowed to work on their site. And their site is set up in the corner where they can get in and out of their site without messing up the roads all over the rest of the property. So, there's time, but not a lot of time. We need direction and we need some decisions so we can complete these things, let alone get the darn subdivision done. So, hopefully that scheduling speech, that's my long way of saying that we got to keep up the work.
But you raised something very interesting. You said you're going to start paving right away, but where are you paving? We don't, you haven't even given us a subdivision to tell us where the lines are going to be in terms of...
But we have to pave the roads, so we still have...
Where are you paving it if you don't know where the line is going to be between the red and the blue?
The road, the road doesn't change. The road doesn't change.
So, and the paving's not going to change no matter what?
It's a private road, so it doesn't matter, right?
Yeah, I don't think the roads, the boundaries of the roads don't change. I think it was how it was counted, is that...
It's where the property line between adjoining private owners.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, there's still, the office buildings function from day one. And even, I don't mean to belabor the point, but we were obligated under our original approval to start operating the shuttle bus, which had started operating two weeks ago. So, I have a little bet that if we have more than one rider a week on there, you know, I'll buy somebody lunch.
There were four yesterday afternoon.
Were you on there twice?
I have not gotten that signage is very poor as to where you should pick up the bus.
So, lots of the things that we all in good conscience put into place years and years ago are now starting to occur, but, you know, it's...
Well, I understand what you're saying. I also think that you're completing all of this, you know, making sure that this is in place so that people can get to the Wallace. I mean, all of that really, I think, has really nothing to do with this development.
Only to the effect of how the ultimate boundary line around the auditorium and what it affects, how it affects Toll and allowing us to complete the subdivision, which is ultimately, should you choose to approve the site plan, you'll ultimately be, I presume, approving the 91 lots that go with it. Otherwise, you can't tax us. So, then somebody will be angry if you don't do that.
Won't impact our pay, though.
We still will get a raise.
Playground, good, good.
Which is not on the plan anywhere.
Sabrina?
Tom's the master of finding out where we can put things.
Well, I'm not sure, I know where to put the playground. What about the playground? Well, I'm not sure, I know where to put the playground. What about the playground? What's the status of all that?
It's up to you.
But where is it?
Why are you looking at me?
The applicants.
Kids are all in college.
The applicant's response was that they didn't think that they needed a playground for this development, that they were providing recreational, a recreational trail, and they had a guest house with a pool, and that a playground was not within their target audience or target occupants.
And we have the playground at the Cupola Building now.
Correct.
But it was always a very makeshift one because the idea would be it would serve the Cupola Building until the East Village opened and a better playground could be put in place that would serve everybody.
Correct.
I don't think the idea was ever for the one of the Cupola Building to be this solitary, only playground where the primary.
Speak into the microphone, please.
That's another subdivision issue too, because that building will get subdivided out of this parcel. And so how do you, you have what easement, the access back and forth to the playgrounds between the various property owners? There's a long trail of the issue that Sheila raised, and it just hasn't been addressed.
Is the town board, does the town board have their eye on a playground for this development beyond the one that's being provided for?
I do not know. I can't answer that.
There are no discussions that you know?
That I am aware of.
Okay. If there were to be a playground, is there space for this playground?
Well, the community.
How big is it?
Of this size, James can speak to this, but the toll has not found a request for playgrounds in communities of this type.
And I think you have this wide open here, this, this green space.
We have a green space there and another green space in the.
Yeah, well, those, you wouldn't, yeah, you wouldn't be using those for playground spaces. It would kill the value.
They're open lawn areas.
Right, right.
So that if there are visitors, they can play on the open lawn, they can go and.
Nobody wants to live on a playground.
Right, right.
So that would be, you'd have to find someplace. It's one of these, it's one of these programmed things that you would hope that you knew you were designing for in the beginning. So you could fold it into a master plan of some kind to try and find a place to put it. At this point, you could find a place to put it because there's land, but it wouldn't necessarily be the place where you would ideally put the playground. But there are some, you know, leftover corner spaces, you might be able to do something, you know, carve something out of this berm. I don't know what, you know, there are leftover spaces, but it would be a playground in a leftover space.
Well, this, this space has visibility onto Roaring Brook Road, I'm sorry, not, on, um.
It's Calvin.
Calvin.
I don't, I don't think they'd want a playground in their backyard either.
Nobody does.
Yeah, there's a few places. I guess you have to figure out though what's the primary, you know.
Speak into your microphone, please.
Is it attached to this amenity space? Is it centralized in the space? Does it need to be centralized to get the, I think there's a lot of thinking about what purpose it's serving.
That's a very good point. I mean, if we're going to do a purpose-built building now for the community center with a swimming pool, why not fold a playground function into that development package and see what we get out of a site plan there for that? Is that something that Toll Brothers would be interested in having?
We're back to just what, what we think the demographic of our buyer is interested in, and they're not, that's not something we would build into the, the amenity package for this type of community.
But isn't it safe to say that your buyer has grandchildren?
As I, as I joked with, with Andy, everyone loves their grandkids. They don't necessarily love everyone else's grandkids.
Well, that's community spirit for me. This is what we've come to.
I got three kids. I don't know. The grandparents love them, but.
Well, then, you know, what happens is that the community then sort of takes over the responsibility to take care of the kids if, if, you know, if, if people won't. So, but I understand what you're saying. It's not necessarily within your programmatic profile for your demographic, but that doesn't mean that it shouldn't be there. And I don't, again, I don't know where the town board is on this. They may come back and say, gee, you know, we really think there needs to be one. We may decide that maybe it's something we ought to be looking at. And the suggestion here, which I think is a good one, is maybe you fold it into the community center package. And it doesn't have to be a playground for a community that has like 90-some units and three kids in every building. You know, it maybe is something which is a lot smaller scale for the visiting grandchildren, for example.
Yeah, I guess our other concern is that if the intent of that playground were to service residents other than those living within our community.
That's a different issue.
You know, our amenities spaces are typically fairly well secured. I mean, this is key card access and, you know, there's, it's not like we're, you're, you're kind of now bringing outside traffic into a community to, you know, park within the limited parking spaces. And it becomes, you know, in the same way that the, the residents of Codwin don't want to have it in their backyard, the, the residents across from the amenity center probably don't want to have it in, in their backyard either.
Fair enough. Which leads me to another question, and I've lost track of this. Is this going to be a gated neighborhood?
It is not.
Is not?
Correct. I think it was pretty clear, right, in the, through the approval? Yeah, I mean, the intent is it for it to be.
Yeah, all, all of these, the, the playground, the fine, the gated community, the number of bedrooms, the amount of wastewater flow, that's all in the finding statement, which is why we have asked for a detailed comparison and an environmental analysis of this development. And when we had done the PDCP, the environmental analysis of this area was very general. And we need to make sure where we are in comparison with the PDCP and the environmental review that occurred during the secret process and where we are today with an actual plan. So that's part of the reason that Les and I were very strong when we said we need a little more detail, not just the checklist of the findings and which, which, which conditions applied, but really what is the story? What is the environmental analysis of this project? And that environmental analysis includes things like lighting, it includes things like steep slopes, trees, recreation, you know, all of those elements of environmental review to get a sense of the, where we meet with that, with the secret that has been done and where we may need to reexamine. And not that that's a bad thing, it could be less, it could be more, but we need to identify those points so that we do our due diligence in, in, under the environmental review.
Yeah, that's perfectly stated. And also, but specifically with regard to the recreation facilities, Sabrina's memo gives you the history of it and the touchstones of it. And it's just a fact that their present proposal is, there's a tension between them, and it has to be addressed.
Mm-hmm, right. So any of those inconsistencies have to be addressed and analyzed? Okay.
And in certain cases, amendments will have to be made to finding statements and other.
Right.
Documents because they're inconsistent.
And, and it, it may be helpful in instances for the applicant to have recommendations or direction from this board to the town board for things that you feel that make a better site. You know, if, if, Tom, you said you're in support of more bedrooms. Well, the town board to hear the rationale, if that is a board decision, it's important for the town board to hear that because you folks are making decisions based on a better site plan, where the town board is making decisions based on legislation. You know, the zoning change that the applicant may be looking at is a town board decision, but you all may have specific rationale and, and reasons to support that that affect a better site. And you've asked the applicant to go back and examine that. So it's important that we flesh out all of these issues here. And, and in the words of Felix, do it in a timely manner, which is, I'm going to throw it back to you folks, to provide the information so we can assess it as part of the process.
Right. And as part of background, I just note factually that this last was on the planning board's agenda in October.
Right, right.
So are there some questions we should be asking about the possibility of, well, we already have additional bedrooms?
Is your mic working?
Actually turned itself off. Are there, is there information that we should be requesting about parking, about generation of schoolchildren, other issues that relate to additional bedrooms? Because we know right now, we've already got additional bedrooms in the Cupola Building, which is not absolutely pertinent to the East Village. But there's also the request for additional bedrooms now in the East Village, so.
Any change like that is part of the request that we have already made for the environmental narrative? Changes to the previously approved PDCP?
So would that involve just getting one of these people who does, you know, reports on school generation to issue an opinion on how many additional children would be put into the school district with the additional bedrooms or larger units?
I guess that's part of it.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's wastewater that has to be considered. There's, you know, the whole host of issues that they need to respond to.
Also, that goes to bathrooms in the basement too, with wastewater and water usage.
Yeah, and the county should have a memo on that.
The county reviews wastewater in relation to the number of bedrooms.
And how about they don't, they don't count the number of bathrooms in the units?
No.
No, they go with the total flow.
So then the bathrooms in the basements would not be relevant to.
This site was issued a maximum flow that would be allowed to enter the county system.
Right.
We need to make sure in that, that flow was examined through the environmental review. It was stated in the findings, it was stated throughout the environmental review. We've asked them to compare where they measure up to that flow. The parking, there's reserve, you know, they have demonstrated, and, and there's a conflict right now with the number of bedrooms in their parking analysis versus what we're talking about here, that also, there's a, a, a office maximum for parking, there's a retail number for parking, and now there'll be a townhome number for parking. And we need to make sure that there's enough parking in this project so we don't run into conflicts with the other projects on the site.
To put it in context, if this application came in unrelated to whatever else has gone beyond this, it's likely the planning board would make a positive declaration and require an environmental impact statement. However, we've had years of environmental analysis and be using that as the background. That's what we're asking for, is a narrative to show how that prior analysis applies. And to the extent that it doesn't, show us what the increased impacts are and demonstrate that they're not significant.
Right, okay.
Before we leave, I just, I just want to be sure that the record's straight on this. I, I did not say that or mean to suggest that a better site plan is predicated on more three bedroom units. I actually said the opposite. I said that you can, I believe you can achieve the better site plan without the extra three bedroom units. I just want to be sure that that's clear. I did say that I think that more bedrooms is, is better for the community, but that's a separate, separate issue from the site plan.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you.
Cool. It's becoming more complicated.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you, Andy.
Thanks, Les.
Thank you. So.
Right, so we're not, we're not even at the point of scheduling, right? But, but there's, there's not, that was going to be, if we hadn't done this, we were going to look at it in more detail. This was really just to get the overview and to get some, some information out there. Okay, we move now to our next item. This is an informal hearing for a pending application. It's Fluger. Fireside Home Subdivision Lot 4, application for a site plan amendment for clearing and grading limit line amendment, tree removal permit and stormwater pollution prevention plan, 16 Little Pine Road.
Good evening.
Yep.
My name is Peter Gregory. I'm with Keen Copleman Gregory, engineers in Mount Kisco. And I'm here tonight with the owner and applicant, Chris Fluger, as well as with Carlos Costa with our pool contractor from Bedford Poolscape. Just to remind everyone, we're here tonight for a permit to construct a swimming pool at 16 Little Pine. And we're looking for an amendment to the original site plan approval that was granted when the home was constructed to, I guess, extend some of our disturbance over an original clearing and grading limit line that had been approved. Since the last time that we were before the board, we've made a number of changes and provided some additional information to address not only some of the comments and concerns that came up from staff, but also from some members of the board. What I'd like to do is probably just go through each of those items to help kind of address and answer some of the questions.
Well, why don't we go through the changes that you've, you've made here? Because I think, bottom line is, what we're still looking at now is what, about 470 square feet?
Yes.
Extra infraction in, in the clearing and grading that was originally approved.
That's correct.
So why don't you go through the changes that, since we last saw it, that you've made?
Do you need a pointer?
Yeah, that'd be great.
There you go.
So basically, what we. Some of the changes that we've made to the plan itself is that what we were looking to do is to see if we could better conform our site grading and filling operation to our clearing and grading limit line, the original one. And, and try and minimize how much we were extending beyond into the lawn area. Currently, that line had been disturbed up to this point out here, where previous owners, maybe even when the home was built, created lawn down into that northern corner of the property. So just to go through this, what we've done is we've reduced the width of our walkway and terrace area along the southern side of the pool by approximately three feet. And in doing so, it allowed us to shift the entire pool terrace and that, and this whole pad area, three feet closer to the house. In addition to that, we were also able to tighten up some of the grading along the lower side. There were some concerns that we were kind of sprawling out and spreading that fill over that lower area. So we took a look at possibly tightening that all up. And for the most part, our boulder wall, we're going to use a boulder regrading with fill, for the most part, follows along the line, and when we get into this area, we then come back in. We are back within the area. Now, while there will still be disturbance on the downhill side to help with constructing that wall, to install the, our stormwater system, we are proposing an infiltration system down in the lower lawn. I think the permanent area of disturbance just associated with this area here would be 470 square feet. So I think there's a significant amount of reduction in that area that had been previously being proposed in terms of filling and regrading and things like that. We were also able to take the pool equipment location that was very close to the setback on this side and relocate it to the back area behind the rear yard on the deck. So for the most part, there's been a reduction in the impervious surface. We were able to move it close to the house. We have, we were able to consolidate some of the grading and tighten that up in this area and keep, for the most part, the majority of it along that line. And we've also been able to demonstrate that with this revision or reconfiguration, that while we haven't submitted it yet, we've demonstrated in the office that our stormwater system will work and we will satisfy addressing any increase in runoff from this area as well as pool drawdown and getting that into our system without having any, you know, in, in increases in runoff leaving the site. Now, one of the other concerns that we also heard is that we wanted to have an idea of where the adjacent property dwellings were in relation to our work here. We were able to obtain copies of surveys for, let's see, 20 Little Pine, which is immediately to the, adjacent to the north, which is right here. And this is the closest dwelling to our pool area. It's approximately 20 feet off the property line, and we're maintaining about 60 feet to the, to the pool area itself. In addition, we also showed 6 Little Pine and 10 Little Pine.
It is on this drawing.
Yep.
And I think one of the other, there we go.
Yep.
And I think that one of the other concerns that you had brought up before was where they were elevation-wise with respect to our area. So these area, this area here is approximately 25 to 30 feet higher in elevation compared to the rear yard of 60.
to the rear yard of 16 Little Pine, and this is about five or six feet higher. There is some buffering, there's some wooded area here along this side, so I don't think we're going to have any impact to the people on the south side, to the right-hand side of the property. They're not going to see anything in terms of the finished product. And then we've also...
It seems like we have enough distance.
About on the other side?
In the back.
20 Little Pine.
It seems like we have enough distance over here also for sound for your machinery.
Right, but I think it's 20 Little Pine.
Twenty.
Yeah.
Twenty's the concern.
Yeah.
Now, just, on your drawing, you should probably see, but over to what would be the east, up on top, those properties are located in Bedford.
Yep.
And 12 Tall Pine, 10 Tall Pine, they're, they're quite a distance away. They're out on Tall Pine. There is a large conservation area that's in here that we're not going to be impacting, so we have some good separation between, but the issue is right here.
And what's the elevation up here with these homes? Is that above you or below you?
Virtually the same.
Okay.
The contour kind of follows along and wraps around. We are higher, this area is higher than here, but this contour kind of wraps around, so they're almost on the same elevation.
Didn't you, I'm sorry, didn't you say that the house, which is up here, was 25 feet higher?
No, no, the one on the south on Little Pine over here was. This is elevated, looking down to the, what would be the garage area.
Building, but, so this one over here, is it about the same elevation?
It's about the same elevation, I would say.
The topography just keeps wrapping around.
That's correct.
Okay.
All going downhill in this direction, this way here.
Okay, good. So you're right, it's this one which is the concern.
This is the one. Now, I've brought some photographs that I'll try and open up and show you, but there is a nat, there's currently a buffer that currently exists, appears to be white pine, there's some sort of a pine. White pine has a very thick and dense screening between two properties. Our application is also looking to supplement some of that in some of the bare spaces. We can see that. But in this area, you really can't, in its year-round, there is very good screening right across through here, as well as from the street, looking in this direction also. And as I mentioned, we, we are looking to supplement not only here, but also to provide some additional trees with shrubs along this area as part of what we're giving back in restoring the lawn area that's going to be given back, you know, in terms of the lawn and complying with that original clearing and grading. There is one tree that's being removed, it's right here on the corner of the deck. It's not really in that great a shape. And I think that in reviewing Mr. Coleman's memos, that I think that with the landscaping and the trees that we're proposing, that we would comply with the tree ordinance in terms of replacement in that area.
Do you have any opportunity for any plantings in here? I mean, this is an odd lot, an odd-shaped lot. So it's almost like on, you know, on the side, on the side lot here where you have the, the pool. And again, you have a cul-de-sac, so I'm just wondering whether or not, I don't know what you have there.
We can definitely look into that, but the issue that we would have, that this area here...
Not a wall of trees, but something sporadic.
We have to be careful, only because this area here is the location of the existing septic system serving the property in the front.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not going to be allowed to plant any trees in that area, but if we can come up with a shrub-like that gives a little screening, and maybe keep that more, just a little bit up in this area, this would give us more screening from the street. This is a little bit open, just right here, but we can definitely look at, with Steve, what we could supply in that area. We are, I think we're showing some, I want to say we have some viburnum going back here, maybe something similar to tie in and anchor that corner with the trees we could check.
So what about, because I think you probably have a good point.
Microphone, folks, please.
Is that on yet? What about...
That must be on.
That's on.
It's, this SF, what's this, again?
Oh, that's just our soil stockpile. As they excavate material, they're going to stockpile it there...
Okay.
...before they pull it off the site.
Okay, so it's just a spoil area?
That's all it is, tempered.
All right, so what about some aggressive landscaping in here? If you can't do anything in here, could you do something in here that would screen the view from the cul-de-sac and from the front yard of this property? Because this is really, I mean, the closest adjacency is to the side of the, of the house, but...
That's correct.
It's really more open to the front yard of the house.
We can look at that. There's a, our pool fencing, I believe, is going to tie into the corner of the house here and come around. We may be able to do something along that perimeter. We would like to give them just a little bit of lawn area up in here, off of this terrace, but I think that we could probably work on screening that area, provided we stay out of the septic.
What kind of fence will it be? Will it be a solid fence or more of a chain link or open fence or what?
Like a wrought iron?
Yeah, probably a wrought iron, open.
Open fence.
Open, it's not going to be like a...
A barrier.
Barrier fence, right.
Yeah, it's, I would think that it's not only a good idea to do something in here for the sake of the public space, but also to provide some privacy for your pool.
Absolutely, yes. We'll, we'll take a look at that.
Does SF represent the fence, the screen fence?
The, no, the SF is our construction silt fence.
Oh, that's your silt fence.
Just for sediment and erosion control practice, and that'd be located, for the most part, in the...
So do you have the fence located on here?
I believe I did. I'm not sure which plan you're looking at, but there is a small designation for a fence that's going to wrap around, I believe, the lower portion of the regrading.
With the little squares?
Little squares.
Line with the little squares on it.
Little squares. The little squares are the fence, got it.
Those are probably the fence posts.
Now, we have had a chance to start approaching some of the neighbors, letting know the type of work and activity that's going to take place, and we, we have given this neighbor an opportunity to review our plan, and they've looked at it, and right now, they have no objection. They put something in a letter to us, they don't have any issues with what we're proposing. We have copies that we could supply to the board now, or we could wait until later. But we have reached out to them to review the plan, and we've contacted the neighbor just to the south that's going to be looking at the plan shortly.
Okay, good, very nice.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything material before you leave on...
No, no, I'm fine with it.
Okay, great.
And on the other two.
Right, okay. Bob, you had some issues, right? We're sort of frustrated here without the SWIP.
Yes, I, for some reason, I'm not quite sure I did not receive any type of SWIP in any way, shape, or form.
You haven't, and, and I think there...
When you say I have it, when did I get it?
No, you haven't.
Oh.
You have not received it, and we wanted to make sure...
You're not crazy.
When they said you have it, I said...
No, no, you haven't received it yet. We have, we have prepared stormwater calculations. We've demonstrated that I think you'll be satisfied with the infiltration practice. We are, we have filled out a notice of intent, and we have had, so, we did perform soil testing, which was witnessed by your office.
I spoke to Terry today, he did do it there, so that's a step in the right direction.
We have very good test results. So if, I think that the, the idea was that if, if this configuration and layout was acceptable, then with the quantified impervious area, we could then provide you with that stormwater calculation.
The SWIP.
The SWIP.
Okay. Any questions? I mean, do we like, is much improvement...
I think so, yeah.
I have a question for Jennifer. Since a lot of the screening along the property line with 20 is pre-existing, when we fold in conditions on maintenance into a resolution, can we talk about maintaining what's there to and making sure that that existing barrier remains and is replaced if something happens to it?
Yeah, if you're relying upon that in your decision, you know, relying upon that as screening for the pool, then I, I think you would be within your right to do that.
Is that screening on the applicant's property?
Yeah, whose properties are, are those pines on?
I just asked. I think they're all on our property.
I think it's mine, but I'm frankly not sure.
And we'll double-check, they were surveyed?
Well, yeah, they would need to be on the applicant's property. I was just assuming they were. Sort of a threshold. Yeah. Yeah, good point.
Probably need to figure that out.
Good.
Okay.
Anyone else anything?
No.
So if not, we'll, we'll wait, the configuration looks good, the proposal looks good, so we just need you to get the SWIP over so that we can schedule you and go to a public hearing, right? Because this requires, it requires a public.
Yeah, did you want to schedule the public hearing subject to the submission of the SWIP?
I don't know how quickly...
If Bob feels comfortable.
That's fine.
Is that okay? And when can we do that, Janice?
Probably not till, deadline for June 6th is May 15.
Does it work?
Oh, yeah, we're ready, we're ready to commit with it.
Okay, great.
We're in shape, yeah.
Good, okay. So we'll do that? We'll schedule you for a public hearing? Do we want to go so far as to have a draft resolution set up, or do you have to have the SWIP first?
I don't see why not. He's very good at submitting the SWIP, and very comprehensive.
Generally, we don't really like to see, speaking for myself, don't like to see
a pool in a side yard, but this is a special case because of the peculiarities of the property. Is there a way that we can fold that into the resolution, too, just to talk a little bit about why this pool could not be located at some other place on the property?
Yeah, I would recommend that you do that, definitely. Yeah, again, because of the peculiar shape of the property.
Configuration, cul-de-sac.
And there was some information in your letter, I forget what it was right now.
Just from what I recall, we have some zoning, we have setback issues, we have the clearing and grading limit that are prohibiting some of those areas, and also the septic and garage area.
I think that, those were some conditions that you couldn't put behind it, but it was in your letter, I just can't find it right now.
Okay, so we can schedule the public, and is there a motion then to direct staff to draw up a resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so we'll see you, hopefully, one more time.
Yep, great.
Sure.
Okay, we have two requests for extensions. First one is for Graveriti, number one, the LLC. This is for downtown. This is the application for a site development plan approval for change of use at 27 South Greeley. Understanding that there are no issues or problems with this extension?
Thank you.
I actually didn't see that, isn't it on the table?
It was on the table. It was something that we learned about about four o'clock.
Was that the apartments?
Yes.
On the second floor?
The truck was working on it.
Yes, exactly.
So they have submitted, they have submitted the plan today, so we would need to retroactively approve an extension of that to today.
To allow it to be, to be reviewed.
And then I think they also still want the extension to go to...
Right. Okay, is there a motion to grant the two extensions that have been requested?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And we have a request for an extension of 91 Bedford Road. This is the application for a site development plan, wetlands permit, tree removal permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan approval at 91 Bedford Road. And again...
That's just for, to get a plan to...
Okay.
I've been watching the application. I don't have any issues.
Okay, no issues, right? You're okay? Right? Yeah, good. Is there a motion to grant the extension requested by the applicant?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And we have minutes. So we have the minutes of March 20, 2018. I would have one suggestion, and actually, this is, I really have to ask board members if they're okay with this. On page three, line 47, I'm not quite sure what Mr. Pilch said, but in line 47, I thought he said it could be rebuilt in the same location, not that it would be. This is regarding the septic system in the event of failure of the current old septic system. So I'm not so sure it would be, but it perhaps could be. It may be a distinction without a difference, but I, I think it is different.
Can it be? If it fails in one location, what, how do you deal with the downtime to build a new one if you don't have an expansion area that you're relying on?
Generally speaking, on the newer applications, that's why they make you put in 100% expansion, so if that system fails where it is...
Right.
You can't use the same area, because the reason it's failing is because the soils are not functioning.
Right, and we asked about the expansion area...
It'd have to be built in another area, so I'm, I'm not quite sure what he really meant here, if he's not here.
Could he just not be permitted until it's rebuilt?
Yes.
Or would occupancy, would you remove the CO for occupancy pending repair and replacement of the septic if it failed, if they don't have an expansion area? Because we asked about the expansion area, and they couldn't give it to us.
Well, you're right. I mean, a lot of these older applications, for instance, never had expansion areas back then, and the county will really have to work with you on that. So I would say that's case by case, so he could have been right.
So I, I think it might be could, as opposed to would, frankly.
Kind of makes sense.
Just a point of question. Tom, did we ever get the answer when you asked about screening on Derby Lane?
Yes, we did.
They did provide it? Okay.
From Steve as well as from the applicant.
Okay. I had a, on page eight, line 38, instead of give back, I would just say restore. Page eight, line 38, substitute restore for the words give back. And I had a question, this is really a question for the board, I, I don't recall, but on, we were talking about the tree law on page 11, line 42. Did we in fact suggest that we wanted to see the canopy replacement at 100% or was it 50%?
I think that's, the memo was written at 100%, and then we sort of walked it back a little bit in the, in the second memo.
That's what I thought. Oh, so this is the first memo.
This is, I think this is the first memo.
Right.
Yes, I thought we did walk it back.
This is old news.
Yes. Fake news. Okay. Did anyone else have any changes? If not, is there a motion to adopt the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and then we have the minutes from, is it April 4 or April 3? It says April 4 on the agenda, but it's April 3.
Tuesday was the 3rd.
Okay.
I'm going to abstain from this one, because there aren't three other people to vote.
Oh, you weren't there.
I really missed a short meeting, didn't I?
It only seemed short. I had one suggestion on page two, line seven, to insert the word "might" in between applicant and B.
I'm sorry, where was that?
Page two, line seven, between applicant and B.
Might be required.
Mm-hmm. And, that was the only change I had. Anyone else anything?
No, I have none.
Maybe the meeting was short because you weren't there, so you laughed.
Anytime you want a short meeting, just let me know, and I'll make another trip out of town.
We only had one applicant back there.
Exactly. No one wants to appear unless you're here. That's the other spin. Okay, as amended, is there a motion to approve the minutes of April 3?
Motion?
Second? Second? All second?
Second.
All in favor?